May I have a motion that we only discuss only the two items under Virginia Code 2.2-37118, consultation with legal counsel pertaining to contractual matter and one with legal counsel for which we went into a closed session.
So.
And may I have a roll call, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Penn.
Yes.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
Mr. Ragland.
Aye.
Mr. Plons.
Aye.
Mr. Reese. Okay, now we'll move on to the Pledge of Legions led by Councilman Dawson and please say standing for the invocation for Councilman Reese.
I pray to be the light of the United States of America, a true republic, a righteous land, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you'd like to join us in prayer, please bow your heads this time. Dear Lord, we thank you for your guidance and our many blessings. We ask for wisdom in all matters in our personal lives and as we work together to build a better community. Please guide and keep us always. Amen.
All right. Are there any modifications to public session?
No modifications, Mr. Mayor.
I would like to welcome all of our visitors here and online for tonight's meeting. I would like to turn it over to Ms. Burton.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of council. It is my pleasure this evening to introduce someone who I believe is known to you all for her long and dedicated service to the town, but who I have appointed as of today as our interim police chief, and that is Jill Neese. Want to stand?
Yes, I will.
Take a seat. Let me just say that Jill did not ask for this position. She told me at one point, as I was having a discussion with several members of the police staff, that she would do whatever was necessary that was in the best interest of the department, and it was on that basis that I thought she was definitely the person who could aptly serve us during this time that we are looking for someone to fill that role on a permanent basis. I did ask Jill to bring with her tonight our two newest police officers who have just graduated from the academy. I believe that it is in the towns and your best interest to know who these individuals are who have made the very important decision to become a part of not only our town but of our law enforcement arm, and so I'm going to ask Jill if she will introduce them to you and tell you whatever she might want you to know about them, but we're very pleased to add them to our law enforcement complement. So, Jill.
This is Officer Rihanna Terry. She comes to us from Sugar Grove. I don't know if you're familiar with that, but it's quite a ways away, so she drives a good ways to get here every day, so that's some commitment. And this is Officer Jamie Bolt, also from Montgomery County. They got hired a while back. I don't know how much you know about our hiring process, but it's a fairly lengthy one. I don't know how much you want me to go into it. It's about an eight-point process, so it takes a long time. There's a written test, a physical test, there's psychological, there's vocational, there's a lot of background, so it's a commitment. And these young ladies committed to us early on and stuck with us. You know, they chose us and they came back to stay with us, and so we're committed to them. They just came out of the academy, it's 20 weeks, where they learn defensive driving, defensive tactics, Virginia Code, officer safety, all the fundamentals of law enforcement and all the things that really frankly can get us hurt. Now they're in the FTO program, they're about two weeks in. I thought they were three weeks in, but they're two weeks in, and they're going to put all that training, just put it out here in the community, and they're actually going to see what it looks like in the real world. So, we are blessed to have them. I think they're both super sharp, and I'm glad they've come to us and I hope they stay with us.
Who's the old guy? I was going to ask you, the handsome guy.
This is my husband, Frank Leecey. He came here to support me and the young ladies here and all of us.
Good thing, Frank.
So, he's the thorn between all the roses.
That's it. That's it.
Well, we do welcome our new police officers and certainly welcome you, Jill, to your new role, and we're here to support you in that in any way that we can, so feel free to come on upstairs anytime, girl, give me a holler, but we really appreciate your willingness to take on this role during a very interesting time for our community, as we all try to come out of this COVID world into whatever the new world. How we can help.
Oh, I will.
All right? Thank you very much, and you're free to leave if you need to.
Thank you. They're on shift if you don't mind.
Has it really been 20 weeks since I swore them in?
It's been, it's been, yeah, it's been a little bit longer than that. Yeah, it's been longer than that.
Doesn't seem like it.
Yeah.
It might for you all.
I'm a high mom.
It might seem longer for you.
I'm sure they feel like they've been through it.
Is that the only two you had in the academy? Did you have, you have more or not?
So, we have two gentlemen we just hired, Weber and Donnie, and I'm sorry, that's the last thing to tell them until we get a bit more familiar, but they start June 14th in the academy, so we're looking to have those guys out in FTO by the fall when these young ladies will clear our FTO program, and so hopefully our staffing levels will be back up to where we can do some of the things I know you wanted in the community. So, that's where we are. Hopefully we'll get a few more after that, maybe see some folks in the January campus, maybe? I don't know.
And Lieutenant now interim chief was on a bicycle a couple of days last week.
In a minute.
Got the bicycle patrol.
Good, good.
I've decided that is for the younger folks at this point in my career, so hopefully these two young ladies will be on very soon as well.
Lieutenant Neese, thank you for stepping up and helping the department, the town in our time of need. We're glad to have you.
I just hope I can do whatever you guys need from me to do, and I think working with this virtual, it's going to happen, so.
And welcome and thank you to our new police officers. We're glad to have you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. I guess we will move on to the public hearings then. For those of you that are here tonight and watching online, council will be conducting nine public hearings having to do with appropriation of grant funds or proposals concerning the upcoming budget for fiscal year 2021, 2022. We'll conduct these hearings in the following manner. I'll announce the topic of each public hearing. Staff will give its report to council. Council will then have time to ask staff questions. Following council's questions, I will open the public hearings to receive comments from the public. After comments are received, I will close the public hearings before proceeding to the next hearing. I also want to emphasize that the council will take no action on these matters this evening, but will consider them at the June 15th council meeting. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to only receive public comment. All right, so we will start with our first item is 10A, cigarette tax. The first public hearing concerns a proposed increase in the cigarette tax. May I have the staff's report?
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I think we have previously shared with you that for the first time in the history of the state of Virginia, counties are now allowed as of July 1st to impose a cigarette tax. Our neighbors, particularly Palaske County, but certainly the other counties in the New River Valley are interested in initiating, if not increasing, that tax to a standard. That standard that has been proposed is 40 cents a pack. You currently are charging 25 cents a pack. That will yield significant revenue to the council if approved, to the town if approved that has helped build the kind of budget that you will eventually have a public hearing on as the proposed budget later in your series of public hearings, going to be happy to answer any questions that the council may have about that particular tax.
I have one comment. I think this is a good move for the town and the county, given that previously with the county having the tax, we basically had a mass exodus of our cigarette sales, so this should help our local businesses.
And again, this is one of those taxes that I like to call a user tax. It's paid only by the people who choose to purchase cigarettes, so it helps to spread the burden of taxes to others other than your general citizen. And you'll see as we go further into other public hearings that that's one of the themes or the efforts in this year's budget, is to try to identify those specific users of certain activities and make sure that they're paying more of the cost of that than the general taxpayer who may have no interest in the activities that are part of the town's budget.
That's a good point.
So, does any other councilman, do you have any questions for the first note? At this time, I will open the public hearing on the proposed increase in the cigarette tax. Do we have anyone in the public that would like to comment? Anything online? Then if there are no further comments, I will close the public hearing on the cigarette tax. All right, we'll move on to item 10B, real estate tax. Our next public hearing concerns a proposed increase in the real estate tax. May we have the staff's comments?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I want to remind the public that the last time the council made any increase in the real estate tax was in 2016. We have a reassessment cycle that is managed by the county. That reassessment occurs only every six years, and so the last time that you've had any increase is six years ago, and while we did in fact advertise and had a public hearing on the reassessment about a month or so ago, that reassessment yielded only about 100 and somewhere between $188,000, $190,000 a year of an increase. Had we kept the amount of the assessment increase to 1% or less, it would have only recovered about $13,000 of the total budget. The council made one of its major goals, as we have had discussions about the budget over the last six or eight months, a priority to replenish the fund balance, which has for the last several years been significantly decreased, and that's unfortunate. And so the two cent increase that is proposed is being dedicated exclusively to the fund balance, so that we can over the next four or five years replenish that fund balance to a level that is comparable to what you had in previous years. Even your auditors would indicate to you that the current level of the fund balance is not adequate. You should have enough to operate without additional revenues for at least six months, and you do not have anything like that. So, we're on a path with this proposed increase to begin replenishing that fund balance as well as looking at other activities that hopefully will increase the fund balance over the next several years.
Ms. Burton, correct me if I'm wrong, we, it was 6% of the, is where we were with the, our current fund, general fund, or unassigned fund balance, 6% of the total budget, is that correct? And we should be at 15.
Yeah, it may be even less than that, although we did after this last audit, we did remove some of the outstanding debt that was owed under the U-DAG account, so we may be a little bit better off, but still in the 6% to 8% range, so we're not even halfway there.
Any questions from the council?
I think along that same line, it's important to note that if you, if you do truly take the time, and I think it's important that if with anyone that's concerned, that they should look at what our fund balance was three years ago, and then what happened two years ago, and how much it declined, and then how much it declined last year. If the town stayed on that path that it has gone down for two years straight, then there would not be a fund balance, and you would see a town in Palaske that, that actually would go into the negative of a fund balance in regards to their ability to have any safety net to handle the, any issues that could arise, and that's not the path that we can go down. In my opinion, that's not one that's safe for any of the town's citizens, for us to be in a position to not be able to adequately service the town, and so something has to change in order to fix that, and I think it's important to, I know Ms. Burton has spoke well in regards to the need for that, but I think it's also important for people to know and understand, and I know in the upcoming open, in hearings for the, for the next public hearings, we'll speak about it more, but I think it'd be worth going ahead and maybe going through all the things and the work that's been done to reduce our budget on our side, and that there's a laundry list of basically every line item that can possibly be controlled or reduced to make sure that we've cleaned up our house better than I think in the time period that I've been here, that it's been cleaned up at every level to try and control every expense that possibly could be controlled, to make sure that we weren't asking of a taxpayer before we had our house, you know, in order as well as it possibly could be. I don't know, Ms. Burton, if I put you on the spot, but if it's possible to, you know, maybe talk about some of the things.
I'm going to do that on the next one, but I can do it ahead of time if that's what the council wants. I do think we need to constantly remember that this two cents is being dedicated solely for the fund balance, so it's not going to be available to fund any other activity if we have an issue later in the year. It's not the contingency fund. It is for the fund balance, and if we are successful as a community in building that fund balance to an adequate level after several years, then certainly the council has the flexibility because of the way it's been dedicated to eliminate that increase. We're not relying on that two cents to fund the general operation of the town's budget, and I think that's important for people to know and understand. Well, let me go into a little bit of what I was going to say when we got to the next item, which is the proposed fiscal year budget. Someone asked me today if I was going to describe a theme of this budget because the county administrator had a theme, and I said I have too many themes, because this budget really had a number of requirements or goals in my mind, many of which we discussed at different meetings, and I got direction from you all as a council. First of all, I think the council's direction was that they wanted a realistic budget, one where we truly had good information about what we anticipated as revenues and even more importantly, what we expected as expenditures, and Councilman Dawson is right, we have dissected just about every possible activity in the town to determine where we might have savings or where we could create reductions, to the point that I've literally checked how many telephones we have and whether or not those telephones are needed, because there are a couple, I found a couple of telephones that were in offices that were no longer being used. It sounds like very little bit of money, but it's a process, it's a procedure that I've instilled hopefully in departments to look at their line items in a way that they haven't had to look at it differently. I will tell you that department heads were asked to participate in the budget process as well as in the capital improvement process, something that they indicated they had not participated in in some time, and so there's still work to be done there. We looked at what expenses the town was bearing that should be borne really by some of our customers because of the special needs that they might have or the special services. So, as an example, if someone elects to pay their utility bill with a debit card and there's a charge from the bank for that use, the town will no longer be covering that expense. That will be an expense of the person who's made that decision in the same way that a few minutes ago I mentioned, that if someone who chooses to smoke cigarettes or purchase cigarettes will pay the tax. We have a very nice facility at the train, at the old train station that we rent out, and candidly, our current rental fees don't pay our costs because we have to send somebody in there to clean afterwards. So, we're making adjustments to those fees and charges for people who are making use of those specific services. The same thing is true of some of our police fees. We have not raised parking fees since 2014. They were at $5. It cost us more than $5 to write the ticket. We've looked at what our neighbors are charging for those kinds of things, so we've tried to look at every aspect of the budget for savings, because I personally have a philosophy that I don't ask for more money until I know that what we have, we have spent wisely. We streamline a lot of our processes that will save us both time and money. Your clerk will attest to the fact that we, for the first time in many years, had a competitive process for insurance, and we were able to save money as a result of that, so that your cost for insurance, all of our policies together, will cost you less next year than they have in the current year or in previous years. I've also been concerned about our employees, because you have a very lean, and I've said this before, a very lean group of employees, not necessarily in girth, but in terms of the size of the organization, and they do a tremendous job, and they have been very, very good at taking direction from me and looking to do things differently. We've reduced expenses in every area. We have, for the first time in several years, some actual cash funded capital projects, and we have an ability with this proposed budget to establish some cash reserves, not just in the general fund, but in your water and sewer funds, and those cash reserves were recommended by your consultant, that you spend at least two meetings and a lot of hours poring over those water and sewer rates that are also a subject of a public hearing later. Some of the decisions that we've made probably are not individually popular in departments where we had line items for everything, and we didn't need individual line items, and that just became an opportunity to move money into different places. We are looking very hard at our whole payroll system, how to streamline that. We have found that we have some employees who are earning comp time that shouldn't be earning comp time, so we're cleaning those kinds of things up, but it's really been kind of a cleansing, kind of eight months, where we've looked at each and everything, and I've tried to in this budget, give you a realistic budget that meets the needs of our community, but also plans for the future in a way that I don't know that we have planned in the past. We kind of live for the moment, and that doesn't work any longer. There's certainly a lot of uncertainty in the world, even as some of the social distancing and mask requirements have been removed, we're not sure how the community's going to necessarily react to all of that, and we need to be prepared for still some, what I call rocky times, but I think this budget positions the organization in a way that we can weather whatever comes in a much better fashion than we did before. I think it's very realistic. I'm sorry that there had to be as many changes, but I think those changes have been necessary. And I don't know, Mr. Dawson, what else you wanted me to say. I'm happy to answer any questions that you or others have on the budget. We were also temporarily hampered in the budget process by losing our finance director without any warning, and I do have to say, as I did in the budget message, that both Brady Deal and Jackie Morris were true troopers in helping me to put this budget together. Comes to you a little bit later than I would have liked, but I think that delay has improved the quality of what we're able to provide.
I have one quick question. I know I asked you before the meeting to look at the tax rates for the past 10 years, and you sent it to me, and I think you'd said earlier it was 2016, but I think the one I saw said 2015, 16 was the last, was the last time we had a rating, because I remember I bought my house in 2015 until this last tax pick, and I paid the same rate, same dollar amount every year up until this one, and I was just thinking about that when hearing from some members of the community about tax increases, and I was noting that my county taxes have increased in the past five years by as much as my town tax bill used to be. So, just as, for the record, the town has done very much with very little in its way as far as tax increases have gone in the past six years.
And that's a double edged sword.
Yeah.
You know, some communities choose to do something every year or every other year, and, and the increases become smaller as a result of doing that, and then other communities have made the decision to wait as long as possible and then, you know, to make what is a tough decision, and I always speak in terms of fiscal years.
Right, yeah, sure.
So, I apologize, but I've always been.
No, no, I just wanted to make it clear for if anybody was watching, that it has been since 2015 at least, since we've, we've had a tax increase, which is, you know, if you think about, you know, whether it's valuation on the houses or tax rates increasing, I mean, it could be up to $100. I mean, I know that my, the valuation on my house went down when I bought it because of the revaluation, and I probably saved $100 a year based on that over the past five years, just on the valuation, if the tax rate was exactly the same, so I think it's a $40 increase for the town, seems well within line of what we're trying to do, trying to be, you know, fiercely responsible here and make sure we have the funds we need to pay our people what they should be paid and do the things that our, our community expects us to do.
One thing I failed to mention, but I know I've talked to the council about this before, we have been very successful as a community in getting a number of grants. Sometimes the easiest part is getting the grant, and the harder part is managing it and making sure that you're dotting all the i's and crossing all the t's. Otherwise, you put your community into a payback situation, and that's something we don't want to have. There have been some hiccups on some of your grants in the past, and the council has asked me, aren't there more grants out there, particularly for water and sewer issues, and there certainly are, but I also told the council in meetings that I didn't think we ought to apply for any more grants unless we had someone whose full-time job was to monitor those grants and make sure that they were properly implemented, and so there is one new position in the budget, and that is the grants manager. There are several positions that have been eliminated in this year's budget, but that is the one new position that I think will help us to continue to acquire grants and then manage them in a proper way, so I failed to mention that, I apologize.
And I think that was, that's a good, that was a good position, and the fact that it's, you've pulled any grant or matching funds out of our general budget.
That's correct.
Which is, which was a wise move, and we appreciate that. So, I, I do think previous councils, I do know, have been very reluctant. I think we were more the latter of what you described. We've been very reluctant to increase taxes without knowing that we were cutting our expenditures as much as we possibly could, so we didn't want, we don't feel, I don't feel that the public is, is the, you know, is the trough that we run to every time we need some more revenue. I think that's exactly the wrong way to, to operate a town.
Touch base, you just mentioned something that I was going to say, that it's funny that we're talking tonight to something that Mr. Penn and you and myself, where the old ones was up here years ago, tried to implement and put in place, because got followed, pushed back and voted down. It's funny how it comes today, because if we'd done it years ago, we would be in fine shape today. Exactly what you're doing, cutting the waste, putting people in position that, that you know can do the job. People want skate parks, they want tennis courts, they want basketball, you might live in a la la land out there somewhere where the rest of the politics, but ain't none of them free. If you want it, you got to pay for it. If you want it, you got to pay for it, regardless whether they use it or not. Sure, people do. But you're on the right path, you're on the right track. And you're on the track that we tried to get on many years ago. We got voted down and everything else for it. So, I know you're on the right track there.
Are there any other questions? Okay, with that, I will now open the public hearing on proposed increase in the real estate tax. Is there anyone here that wants to speak? Do we have anything online?
No, sir.
All right, if there's no further comments, I will now close the public hearing. Now, we'll move on to item 10C, general fund budget. The next public hearing concerns that FY 2021, 2022 general fund budget. May we have a staff report, please?
Mr. Mayor, I think I just gave it.
Can you do it again? Do you all have any questions on that one since we kind of touched that too?
We're good, Mr. Mayor.
Good?
Well, I just had one question. I was noticing, I know we were transferring the Ratcliffe Museum. And so, there's a thirty thousand dollar, now it's zero. Is that because that's moved into a different line item?
Yes, it's now under contributions.
Okay.
Opposed to it being a separate budget. And the arrangement that we have with Ratcliffe is that we will continue to pay the top of the utility bills.
Right.
Since it is a town-owned building. And they will be responsible with the grant that we will be, is recommended for you all to give to them. They'll be responsible for the staffing and any other expenses. And they are comfortable with that. In fact, I just emailed them the other day with the dollar amount and the indication that we were going to keep the utility expense on our side and be equated.
Thank you. I just wanted, I just wanted that was clear. Thanks.
There's no other questions? I will now open the public hearing concerning the proposed FY 2021, 2022 general fund budget. Do we have anyone that would like to speak on that? Do you have anyone online? With that, if there's no further comments, I will close the public hearing. And we'll move on to item 10D, capital improvement plan. The next public hearing is on the proposed capital improvement plan for the general water and sewer funds. May we have the staff report, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and members of council, and by previously indicated, we do have, for the first time in several years, some general fund-funded capital projects, those being a repair to 72 East Main and the purchase of a dump truck that is 25 years old or more. Those are being funded out of the general fund, so they don't require any debt issuance. And I think that's important to note. In the water fund, we have several projects that towed $841,000. Excuse me, the most significant of which is an item to add additional lateral connections and water lines in West Main Street so that buildings in the future can have the capacity to have sprinkler systems, which currently isn't difficult given the absence of those lines. We will be replacing lines and tearing up West Main Street. That expense is budgeted at $626,000. And following those water lines being inserted, we will then come back and using some V-DOT money that you have yet to appropriate, I want to wait till after the first of the budget year because of some of the expenses. We will use V-DOT money to actually come back in, replace and pave. But they'll pave the street and we'll do new curb, gutter and sidewalk. So, that particular project may also be eligible for this American Recovery Act money that we are still trying to get our arms around. But that's your major project in the water account. Although we do have the beginning of a transfer reserve, which was recommended by your consultants, some hydrant repairs and replacements, a small equipment trailer item. And then in the sewer fund, again, as recommended by your consultant, we have a transfer, create a reserve in both water and sewer so that you can in the future not have to rely upon additional debt as the only way for you to fund items in the future. The amount for the sewer fund is $189, excuse me, $159,500. And all of these are being funded in the individual account. So, there's not additional debt that is being absorbed in the current year budget. The one that is debt financed is that water line replacement that I believe we will be able to. That federal money. But I can't commit to that at this point, so it is shown in this budget.
Does council have any questions?
I have one quick question. That West Main water line replacement, are we expecting to, I mean, not just take on the debt, but actually do the project in the next fiscal year? Okay, I just wasn't sure. Thanks.
There's no other questions? I will now open the public hearing concerning the proposed capital improvement plan for the general water and sewer funds. Do we have anyone that would like to speak? Anyone online? Now, if there's no further comments, I will now close the public hearing. And we'll move to item 10E, water rates. Our next public hearing is on the proposed increase in water rates. May we have a staff report?
Mr. Mayor and members of council, you all have spent at least two public meetings in having a very detailed presentation as well as conversation about the need for us to increase our water rates. We have posted in the newspaper what those specific rates are. It would take half the evening to read all of these out to you. But I would just indicate to you that our consultant has recommended an eight percent increase in both water and sewer rates as well as various connection fees. Those are needed not only to meet ongoing operations, but to have sufficient funding to do certain capital projects as well as meet debt service on projects. There are some significant financial goals related to both water and sewer rates. Those are enterprise funds, which means those funds are supposed to be able to stand on their own without additional assistance. So, the rate payers are the ones that pay for those services. You do not have a sufficient operating reserve or capital reserve in water. And so, that eight percent increase will in fact begin to take us down the road to accomplish that. It, the presentation does indicate that you all will have to raise rates for the next several years, although I'm hopeful that, again, with the American Recovery Act monies, which does put a lot of emphasis on infrastructure being a priority, that we'll be able to do some of these projects with that funding and not have to have future rate increases the way it has been anticipated in your consultant report. But the recommendation for this coming year is for an eight percent increase in these fees and charges.
Does council have any questions? If not, I will now open the public hearing on the proposed increase in water rates. Any comments? There are no further comments, I will now close the public hearing. And we'll move on to item 10F, water fund budget. Next council will conduct a public hearing on the proposed FY 21, 2021, 2022 water fund budget. And may I have a staff report, please?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor and members of council. As you'll see, the attachments and the advertisement, that fund is expected to increase about $160,000, most of which in fact is directed for the reserves that I just mentioned need to be established, both the capital and the operating reserves. We do have some additional expenses that we anticipate in the water filtration and purification line items, as well as in the transmission and distribution lines. But again, the eight percent increase is what is reflected in both the revenues and expenditures.
Does council have any questions at this time? If not, I will now open the public hearing on the proposed FY 2021, 2022 water fund budget. Any comments on that? If there's no more further comments, I will now close the public hearing on the proposed FY 2021, 2022 water fund budget. And we'll move to item 10G, sewer rates. At this time, council will conduct a public hearing on the proposed increase in sewer rates. May we have the staff report?
Mr. Mayor and members of council, as previously indicated on my remarks regarding the water fund, the sewer fund likewise is recommended for an eight percent increase. That increase will not only fund ongoing operational expenses, but begin to build the capital reserve and the operating reserves that are both strong financial goals and things that are looked at by lenders when you do go out to issue debt on various projects. I will tell you that sewer fund is significantly higher in its expense as a result of our participation in a lot of the capital items of the Pepperidge Farm Ferry Authority that does service our sewer treatment. And so, you'll see that that particular fund increases by almost $350,000 this year because largely of those expenses that are associated with the Pepperidge Ferry Authority. And I think, excuse me, the council has talked previously about its participation on that authority. And you do have Mr., and as one of your representatives along with Mr. Worrell, who sit on the board of that authority.
Are there any questions from council? If not, at this time, I will open the public hearing on the proposed increase in sewer rates. Are there any comments on that? If there are no further comments, I will now close the public hearing on the proposed increase in sewer rates. We'll move, move on to item 10H, sewer fund balance. The final public hearing is, the next hearing is for the proposed FY 2021, 2022 sewer fund budget. May I have the staff report?
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I think I probably, excuse me, covered the sewer budget at the same time that I was speaking to the rates. The budget as recommended for next year is at $3.948 billion, about a $350,000 increase over the current year. And as I mentioned, a big part of that is in fact the cost that we have as a participant in the Pepperidge Ferry Water Treatment, excuse me, wastewater treatment authority. The eight percent that was recommended is shown here. And as I mentioned earlier, certain items for operating reserves and capital reserves are also reflected in the proposed budget.
Council have any questions on that? At this time, I will open the public hearing on the proposed sewer fund budget for FY 2021, 2022. Any comments? Since there are no further comments, I will close the public hearing on the sewer fund budget for FY 2021, 2022. Item 10I, appropriation of funds. Our final public hearing tonight will be on appropriation of funds from UDAG to the sewer fund and from the CARES Act to the general fund. May we have the staff report at this time?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and members of council, I think I previously mentioned to you that the town has received, at its request, some funding that had been previously held in a separate account. And we have had that enter the UDAG account now, wish to transfer $280,644.80 to the sewer fund, which will help cover some of the expenses of the Pepperidge Ferry buildings that we receive for treatment of our sewage. The other amount is $38,000, and that's a reimbursement from the county to the town for various CARES Act items that we purchased and they have now reimbursed us for.
Does council have any questions? Council has no further questions or comments? At this time, I will open the public hearing on the appropriation of funds from UDAG to the sewer fund and from the CARES Act to the general fund. Any comments on that? If there are no further comments, I will close the public hearings. Now, we'll move on to the public comments period.
Yes, sir, we have a request from Mr. Ike James.
Thank you.
I've sent this, but I'm just.
Yes, I got an email, yes.
In case there are any questions while I'm talking.
All right, thank you.
Need some more paper for you, I know you need it. Thank you.
Mr. James here, this is, I haven't seen you in some time.
I'll pass on, I'll pass on, please. Okay, okay, I've got a few more. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, most of you already have seen what I've sent out, so it's somewhat difficult to know where to start. But I've started at the beginning. One is I've been, I've been concerned about the town. I've been concerned on a couple of points that I put in here. I think despite good efforts, and it's not because of sloppiness, the town's fit really seriously. And it's very difficult to know what to do that will bring this town back. And the one, this almost occurred by accident. I was walking the streets on Saturday. And I walked down to the far end of East Main and it came up. And it occurred to me, it's really a desert there, particularly on Saturdays. And then in ideal, it's a simply huge amount of area. And there was an opportunity there for tailgate parking and simply having like an open flea market. The point being, just as a practical matter, is it puts a whole lot of eyes on an area which is not doing terribly well. But with a few nucleus and dimes in it, that are even doing very well. And if it were kind of in the process, if you were at a flea market and you had a, let's say, a regular Saturday flea market, that could be an ongoing interesting event for attracting people. The other point is, is that mostly flea markets are just selling conventional property. But I think there's also an opportunity here for having displays for real estate. And one of the concerns I had, even when I bought my building, was it was very difficult to find what property is actually for sale in this town. And it also, and. And it also, and on the other hand, sometimes very difficult to sell property. So it occurred to me that if you had your normal flea market, but also it was almost like a real estate market, if you were a homeowner and you were interested in selling property, you could just take your display down there while you were selling other items. So it looked like to me that there could be a push for bringing in people, for people who are interested in buying part property, particularly if in any way the tailgate operation was a success. So that is, that was the lower part of the street. Now, more directly on West Main, the interest there was actually in a pedestrian zone. And in my view, if a town is going to be successful, it's actually when people are walking around, buying, talking, and things of this kind. We're not having enough of that on West Main. If we, if we had a, one of the one lane, and I think the South Lane would be better, simply because of restaurants, et cetera, you could have on, you know, on-street dining, et cetera. You could have separate venues. And I think it could bring a lot of life to the town. The downside on pedestrian zones is, is weather. December is just a dreadful month, you know, if you're going outside. And it looks silly to have the street shut off. So the proposal that I was putting here was a convertible pedestrian zone. Whenever you wanted, on that lane of traffic, whether it was flowing east or west, the South Lane, whichever was decided on, that could be used again for traffic in times when it wasn't useful as a pedestrian zone. The other point, which I think everyone in this room is aware, is it's difficult to get to West Main, and it's, and I believe the consensus that's going around even at town council is simply to have the turnoff from Washington. And I think that's an awfully clever thing to do. So I won't hold you longer, but I hope, I hope you, you really consider it. Because I think, I think the town has a lot of opportunities. And the other thing that interests me, if you look at it from a dollars and cents standpoint, a lot of this can be started at a very low expense. Sure, they're more expensive than you actually expect. But I think a flea market, for example, in that, in that area, on a first-come, first-served basis, where you simply go down East Main, then you come up Third Street, and then you go down Madison, you know, as you fill this out. It, it wouldn't be cluttered soon. It would require daily a person on Saturday who would actually had to be an administrator, making sure that people were located in proper places. The other point I might add that's interesting with, with tailgate parking is that if you have a conventional drive-in parking, where you go in directly to park, when you back out, that is an extremely dangerous moment, because you're blind. What you're relying on is a good faith of the other driver to stop, you know, as you nudge out backwards. It's if I'm parked next to a large pickup truck, I can't see when I'm coming out. The problem on West Main with, with drive-in diagonal parking is that there, the children there who are at the dance classes, they're very young. If also, if you had a pedestrian zone, all those people would be very vulnerable if you had a dangerous parking situation. And if you consider the way a car doors operate, when you park and you open your doors this way, children and all people are forced out into the street. You know, you back up. If you, if you, if you're backing in and you open your doors, the child is forced back toward this street, which is a safe area. The other point that I'm concerned about is bicycles, since, since my business is bicycles. If I'm having my business on West Main and it's, it's drive-in parking, then, then I, I think that people are at risk. So I would urge you to, back-in parking is unusual. It's done, and it's, it's a little bit more difficult, you know, in backing in. But if you consider any parking arrangement other than having a lucky space where you happen to park, you've got to go, go in reverse at some time. And it's far better if you're going in reverse at the time when you can see, when there are very few people behind you, and when you're going out, when you can very readily see what is happening with traffic. A lot of the YouTube videos I've put, put in there pretty much covered that point. And I actually thought a lot of them were interesting. Many of them from different points of view. But I'm, I'm going to be probably beyond my five minutes. But are there any questions that you might have, or?
I would just say thank you for the information. It's certainly a wealth of information, so I look forward to reading it.
Okay.
It's a lot to digest.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to come back sometime, you know, if it's possible. You know, after, after you've had it. Also, I appreciate you watching tonight. You folks are doing a lot of work, you know, so thanks.
We appreciate your interest.
Thank you, Ike. Thank you. There's no other public comments. We'll move on to the consent agenda. If you would look over the May eighteenth, twenty twenty one council work session minutes, and if I can get someone to make a motion to accept those.
Mr.? Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the May eighteenth, twenty twenty one council work session minutes.
Thank you.
And may I have a roll call for that, please, sir?
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Reeves?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Paulson?
Aye.
Mr. Reeves?
Aye.
We'll move on to discussion of tall grass.
All right, I want to start before Mr. Radcliffe.
Not forget, not gonna learn.
As I said at the last meeting, some of the pictures that Mr. Radcliffe shared were clearly areas that the town is and should be responsible for. And we took immediate steps to correct those areas around poles and the town's property. We did send out the next day after your discussion, Ms. Hodge and Ms. McKinney to the businesses on East Main Street, the major commercial corridor. In the meantime, a couple had, in fact, load, I think because they have contractors that come in and do that on a regular basis. They did visit all of the businesses where there was located tall grass, carried a copy of the policy with them, and shared it with those owners. They asked why we hadn't been enforcing it before, but they did say that they would handle it in the future. And I have taken a lot of time to drive around the town to see exactly what is happening, and it's a mixed bag. There are clearly people who either know it's their responsibility and take responsibility for handling the grass, or they have received notices in the past from us. We clearly have a major problem with vacant properties. And we end up with some of those on our annual list. And we do, after cutting, file liens if people do not pay the bill that they receive when we have done those cuttings. My personal belief is that we need some time to educate the community on what their responsibilities are. If a property does not have a sidewalk, it's clear that they should be cutting to the road. I think the issue that Mr. Radcliffe brought up has to do with perhaps the uncertainty, because there is a public sidewalk that is in between that and the curb. The current code is very clear that it is a responsibility to the curb. And I personally tried to be a lawyer and figure out some way to, to say it and still keep responsibility to the curb irrespective of, or absent the sidewalk. And I did ask Mr. Regus to see if he could perhaps offer some alternate language to you all. But I would hope that since your meeting of two weeks ago, you have seen an improvement. I know on Route eleven, I noticed that we had some unsightly tall weeds, grass growing that abuts the Lindinwood property, as well as some others along that strip. I contacted Public Works about it. They said they were unclear as to ownership. And we did, in fact, check, and it was in the town's right-of-way. And so we have, as of early this morning, cut that area. So I would hope that the council might be willing to give us another month to see if we can't bring things into compliance with the owners being responsible before you decide to alter your ordinance. But obviously, it's a decision of the council, so. Spencer, have you been able to come up with some language, if you think?
Well, I think, nothing specific. And the reason I say that is because the ordinance is just, is, is kind of simple and to the point. And it's not very detailed. And, and, you know, it's, it came down in my mind as either you leave the responsibility with the citizens or you don't. Now, you internally have gone out and worked with, the, the staff has worked with the folks to identify and let people have that knowledge. But, you know, it would be a significant step back to, to then say, well, if you don't put that in the ordinance, that, that then you're going to be, have a responsibility to maintain everywhere. It, it's hard to, it's hard to have it part in, you know, to say, well, for the ones who are doing it, that's great, but the ones who are not doing it, you know, will enforce it. I, I think that the, the method you, you kind of produce is you leave the ordinance as it is, and you try to address it more swiftly with the other components of your administration, which is how do you get there and the notice process to people in the abandoned houses and stay on that? Because if you take it out, you're just absorbing all the responsibility. And there's, it's hard to say that, you know, you'd be retooling an ordinance in, in a completely different way. It just says up to the sidewalk or up to the road.
I think it's just important that, and I know you already addressed this, but we, I think we do, it's just a wide open door for, for people to find issues with us not making sure that our areas are taken care of correctly. And so I think it's, it's just critical, you know, as we go down the path of trying to get this in line the way that it should be and make it clear and make it clean. Because we've got to be clean on our properties. You know, and I think a lot of work's been done, but I think there's still not too hard to find places where we've got, you know, weeds or grass or, you know, stuff well overgrown on places that are on our own. And so I think they have to see that we recognize that we're working on our own as well.
And I would invite anyone who sees a violation, town-owned or otherwise, to let us know. I can tell you that every time I've been out and have found anything, the Public Works Department has certainly responded. We can't be all places at all times. I do think if you want to look at that ordinance in the future, I would encourage you to reduce the height of the grass before it becomes a violation. It currently is listed in the ordinance. It's at twelve inches. And by the time you give notice after ten days, before you can do anything, twelve inches has become, depending on the weather, sixteen or eighteen, and it really is unsightly, and it doesn't grow evenly. It would be nice if it kind of all grew at the same height at the same time. But you're absolutely right. We cannot ask of others, we cannot be responsible for ourselves, and we need to do a better job. And I'm trying to get out more to see those areas. And I have insisted that our code enforcement person do that as well. And I have assigned another employee on a part-time basis to work with code enforcement and to go out and deal with these issues, at the same time identify other code issues that we may have.
It may be a little simplistic, but is there a, do we, do we have a map or something indicating what our responsibility is? It, it seems to me if you don't have something that you visually look at, it's going to kind of be hit and miss.
You mean in terms of what is the town's property?
Town's responsibility. So I, I think, because I, the Works' comments, I think it's extremely important that we, we take care of them.
Because I know there was grass in the cracks in the medias on East Main Street last week, and I called them in immediately, and I said, and the other thing I would tell you that we're trying to do, in today's world, you have to have a special license in order to put herbicides on grass. Now, you and I can do it at our homes, and nobody requires that of us. But if you're a public entity, you have to have someone with that license. And we do now finally have someone. So part of what they did last week was to go and actually spray a lot of places, and they are turning brown. And we'll go back and actually pull that out. And then we should not have any weed there for the rest of this, of the season. And that's the beauty of being able to put the treatment down. But that's time-consuming, too. And we probably, you know, given the amount that we have to deal with, we may need to send someone else to the, to the school to get certified in order to continue using, doing some of that.
What, what kind of response rate did we get? You, you mentioned a lot of vacant properties. Those are the ones, as you said, that end up waiting weeks. Is it just?
The code allows you to give notice once in a growing season if you have a perpetual problem with the same residence. And we do do that. We do the one notice, and then we can go as soon as the grass reaches a certain height. Now, we don't go out and measure. We don't have a yardstick, you know, but you can pretty much judge it from the road. And I sign every week anywhere from, I'd say, six to ten vendor slips for our vendor that does go do the grass cutting. And we've recently put an ad in the paper asking if anyone's interested in doing some grass cutting for us, because we only have currently the one person that does that. The other choice is to send our own staff to do that, but that just further reduces our ability to respond to other issues. So I want to avoid that, but we have put this ad out hoping maybe we can find some other people, particularly if it was someone else who might be interested in doing some grass cutting. That would help us on our own lots, but also on some of these that we're having to build to an outside.
So, and then one last question. You mentioned the property adjacent to the Lindinwood property on Route eleven. And the, so when we know that, I, I, this has come up numerous times throughout. I, I know it's a big task, but I, I think the entrance ways into town are certainly key, key areas as far as appearance, that being one of the main orders into town. The Creek Bank, you mentioned herbicide. I know that probably gets a little more complicated with water. Excuse me?
They're not doing herbicide there. They're doing with a bush fog or something.
So, and, and I, I just feel like that's one of the key areas. And, and the minute that grass on the inside of the sidewalk on the Creek Bank gets high, it really has a detrimental effect on that whole strip coming into town. I don't know what it takes or what we can do there, but that would just be, that would just be a specific location that, that I've noticed.
And your idea about a map is a good one. I'll see if we can develop something that kind of makes it clear what our responsibilities are and have people on the lookout for those areas.
That way, we're proactive and not reactive.
Yes, sir.
And speaking of, I mean, it might be worth looking into since we're going to be trying to map sewers and sewer and stormwater stuff. Maybe having something that's more of an online so that it can be updated regularly as we buy and sell property and, you know, try to remove some stuff from the town rolls. Something. and, you know, kind of remove some stuff from the town rolls, um something.
Get a chance, Mark, would you ride down Memorial Drive or have somebody ride Memorial Drive? Did y'all cut that tonight? Memorial Drive, and and I guess my biggest is is our business and our our districts that uh were trying to keep clean for people to travel, mow mow garden. I I was up here earlier today and and you got spots, grass along the sidewalks like this. That Memorial Drive.
Well, I drove Memorial Drive last week and noticed that we had a lot of people who were cutting, but then we had some areas that were bad, and I know that I asked Carla to go take a look at those, um but I have not driven that one today.
If I if, you know, I guess we'll just leave it on the other piece, if if his wording needs to be changed, it's town's property, I it's just my position, we're responsible for. And I don't care where it lies. I mean, we we're just looking at what separate tax increases here, and now we're telling these very people doing this, you got to cut that grass and there's no block deal. It just doesn't add up to me for some reason, I don't know, man, I I'm not. I I think if it's town's property, we'll be cut, period. I don't care where it is. Before you go out here and tell somebody else, you know, you better doctor up your land, but you know, you cut several bell, hey, I'm mine. Uh you just didn't think about it, and if it's worrying, I I believe alone, but.
Let me just remind everyone that the town right-of-way is best defined by where you see telephone poles
Correct.
and utility poles.
Correct.
And that means that a lot of people's yards are literally the town right-of-way. And a lot of people have put shrubs and trees and flowers and everything in that area because they see that as part of their yard. And we do not have the staff irrespective of these tax increases to go around and start cutting all of those areas. And you do have people who, for whatever reason, are complying. They may not realize that they're complying to the code, maybe they just think they want to have a nice-looking area in front of their house. And so it it seems to me that in some respects, you know, we're not appreciative of the people that are cutting, um and that we're going to take on that responsibility. Now, with the when we visited on East Main last week, we told the property owners that we would cut it this one time, and we would hope they would make arrangements to take care of that in the future, and they were receptive to that. Time will tell, you know, whether or not that works, and that so my request to you all is just give us a little bit more time to see if we can get compliance and if we as the town can do a better job on the areas that clearly are ours and before you make any change. But again, that's a council decision.
I I mean, I don't disagree with it, I guess I just try to get in my head, if we've been doing it for all these years, or we stopped this year. Been doing it since whatever, and it's the same amount of grass that we've been cutting, it's the same amount to cut this year without taking on any more. I I guess this is what I can't get through my head is, I've never seen our sidewalks look as bad as they look. I I'm sorry, I've not, Memorial Drive, it's par, I've never just seen it look like this, and I just don't understand how we go from fifteen years, twelve whatever, and then all of a sudden, it we just ain't got to do it, I I just don't, I don't buy that because the same amount we're mowing is
It's my fault for not mowing it, because when I saw them doing it last year, I said, what does your town code say? And I pulled out the code, and the code is the same that I've seen in every community that I've ever been in, that we're not responsible for that, the property owners. So I told them, I said, this next growing season, you're not to cut it. And we put out a press release, and we did things on Facebook telling people, you know, it's that time of the year, you're, you know, you need to cut your grass. We told them in the same press release that hopefully they would cut with their cuttings going back into the yard and not on the street, um and that it was their responsibility. It is my fault because I took the position that as long as it's in the code, we have to adhere to the code.
You you're not wrong, I'm not saying you're wrong, I I'm just saying if we was already doing it, we should have just left it alone. Uh you're not wrong, you're right. You you're exactly right, it's up to us. If I'll give you the time to do it and look at it, but I don't want this thing following in in our business, we're trying to clean the town up, we're trying to do it, and we got grass, it's grass, awful. Door Highway is turd. We used to take the inmates there and clean those creeks, and I'm sorry, these tree huggers, they can they can love it all they want, but it is terrible looking, the creeks, I'm sorry, I don't care who it is, and I'm friends with friends of Peak Creek, and they do a great job, but that random museum and that creek right there is 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 terrible looking, and I'll say that. I ain't talking about grass, I won't. That's for next time.
Let's just leave this on the agenda.
Yeah. Let's go.
Where'd you go with the last?
We won. We'll be darned.
Okay, so we're going to move to the appropriation of VBAF grants. So, uh we went to Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four, Resolution appropriating grant funds from an environmental assessment.
If there are no questions, I move that we adopt Resolution twenty twenty-one dash twenty-four as written.
Same. And may I have a roll call for that one, please, sir?
Yes, sir, Mr. Pan?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Reeves?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Fox?
Uh.
Mr. Reeves?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to council comments. So Mr. Pan, you have any comments?
No, sir. Whoa, thank you.
Mr. Dawson? None today.
Mr. Reeves?
No, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Damn, I'm not looking at you.
I I'll keep it short. I I I will say this in the past, that uh I I just cannot stand in supporting any type of tax increase. I I've never been that, but I will say for this year, and I'll leave alone, that with Ms. Bertrill's hard work, and we have seen what she has cut by her knuckle, and she has moved people around and personnel around and took out positions, and those people are working very hard to make up for the shortfall, all of our staff, and counting down there, you ladies in the water department, you you're doing a great job. I hear nothing good stuff, I'm I'm sorry you're working short, you are doing a great job. I feel very comfortable with supporting this budget for the first time, and I've said it here, and I'll I'll just leave it that simple. This really goes back to you because you didn't cut the grass, thank you for the buck.
You can put it back on the agenda if we go and do a better job, I agree to that, Mr. Radcliffe.
He will.
And I know. Don't have to give him permission, do you?
And Mr. Reeves?
Uh actually, just made me think of, just recommended me to think of something, I was um messing around with the creeks and stuff, actually walking down from that's the train station um on that the run that goes down there, and then it goes under the bridge and then under the train tracks, and uh I noticed that, I mean, it's a lot of water that goes right under those train tracks, and there's a nineteen twenty-four, you know, in the concrete of those of that sort of overpass on the train track, and I don't know if anybody's looked in there, but it don't look very big. I mean, it's I I think I would have difficulty crawling in there, let alone anything. So, I mean, I wonder if one of the reasons we're getting such a backup on that heavy water days is that some of those, some, I mean, and I don't know, you know, it may be that it was originally okay and just gotten filled up through time, but if everything that comes down pierced out, I mean, everything from the from the rail yards down to the west or east, I'm not sure, east, and then everything from up past the Radcliffe and that part of town, so it's a lot of water when it rains, hey, it just, it seems like there's, it doesn't matter how much of, you know, what's in there, it's just going to, there's a there's a choke point there. Um and it it seems like maybe it's something we should at least be aware of and maybe put on a a list and, you know, if we can ever get Norfolk Southern to pay attention to us. Because, I mean, I think after a hundred years, you know, maybe it's time to just take a look at it here.
Maybe it hasn't been cleaned out since ninety?
It's possible.
I think the grass is too long in there.
You can see the city grass up there, I think the water runs off of it, sorry.
All right, so we'll move on then to the manager's report now.
You don't have any comments?
No, I'm just going to let it go.
Well, I think I've talked enough tonight. Um I appreciate uh what has been said and your support of the budget. I will tell you that it has involved a significant number of your staff. It doesn't have everything in it that they wanted. In fact, I continue to have people say, well, what about this, what about that? And I said, let's live with what we have and see how things come out. Uh it's not, nobody got everything they wanted, uh but I do think that it is creating the kind of path for the future that this town uh needs and deserves, and I think uh over the next year, uh we will be able to make significant improvements. So I appreciate the time and effort that you all have put in it and the seriousness with which you have listened to reports and discussions as we've gone through many things, and I think uh as soon as we do get um the final details on the American Recovery Act, we will need to have a fairly lengthy discussion with you all about your ideas about how we should allocate those funds uh for specific uh projects. So your work is not done by any means, but um we will, in fact, I'm going to have a discussion with my fellow managers later in the week where we're going to talk collectively as a region about how we should approach the use of those monies, uh so that hopefully we can see uh the best results for not just our community but for the region as we can perform.
And and do you have the full guidelines? Are they just trickling out?
Well, they are still under review, but we have not gotten the direction that we need from the state because we are a non-entitlement unit, we have to wait till the state sends us material, and we already know what we have to send them as soon as they ask. We had expected, um I guess, the end of last week, when you talked to Mr. Pfeiffer, to have a meeting fairly soon uh for those non-entitlement uh groups, but we haven't had that yet. I can send you all some of the latest guidelines if you want to have some nighttime uh reading, uh but I think the real issue is how they're going to be interpreted, and that's why I suggested at the last managers' conference that we had that maybe it would be good for us as a group to kind of talk over each community's ideas and make sure that we kind of had a sounding board before some of us went off, you know, pie in the sky to have a particular idea, uh and so we're going to have that discussion later this week.
Thank you. Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Did quite a bit of talking tonight, didn't you?
Yes.
I did last time. All right, with that, as a reminder, our future future council meeting will be June fifteenth twenty twenty-one work session. Closed session starts at five, the public session starts at six thirty. With that, can I have a motion for adjournment in a second?
So move.
Second.
And all in favor?
Aye.